All right. I think we have enough for our quorum, so let's get started. If we could sample the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice. If I could have the attendance, please, Director.
Dan Pastado.
Here.
Dan Lewitt.
Here.
Dee Mello.
Present.
Dee Reyes.
Here.
Em Russo.
Here.
Jay Sanford. E Sightsman.
Here.
All right, announcement regarding notice. I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular monthly December Board meeting has been scheduled for, having been scheduled for Thursday, December 9th, 2021, was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, as notification to the general public of said meeting, and sent to the City Clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the Bulletin Board in City Hall, the Hoboken Public Library, and at the Hoboken Police Department. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, I direct that the minutes of this meeting to state the following. As a result of the restrictions established by Executive Order 107 issued by the Governor of New Jersey with respect to the need to limit public gatherings to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, the meeting will be conducted exclusively through the use of communications equipment. This procedure is in accordance with NJSA 10:4-9.3, which states that a public body shall not be deemed to have violated any provision of the Open Public Meetings Act in conducting the meeting by means of communication or other electronic equipment. In addition, this procedure complies with Article 3, Section 7 of the Authority Bylaws, which allows for participation in authority meetings by members of the Board of Commissioners by means of telephone conference or similar communications equipment. And Counselor, I believe you have your addendum to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In keeping with the Housing Authority's normal practice of affording members of the public the opportunity to comment at monthly board meetings, the Authority will be accepting comment during this meeting in one of three ways. First, comments can be sent by email to hha@myhhanj.com from now until 7:30 PM. All timely and legally appropriate comments received by email will be read aloud by an authority representative for all attendees of the meeting to hear. Second, beginning at approximately 7:30 PM, the Authority will allow access to participants one at a time to comment using their telephone or through Zoom's audio function. Third, if you are participating in the meeting using Zoom from a web browser or smart device, you can submit comment using the Zoom Q&amp;A function, which can be accessed by clicking the Q&amp;A icon at the bottom of your screen. We require that any member of the public who wishes to submit comment using the Q&amp;A function, please limit themselves to a single submission rather than submitting multiple brief comments. In the event that a member of the public submits more than one comment, only the first legally appropriate comment will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comment submitted after 7:30 PM will be rejected and will not be read aloud at the meeting. In addition, please note that while Facebook, while the Zoom video of this meeting, excuse me, is being streamed through Facebook Live, public comment will not be accepted through Facebook or Facebook Live. Any member of the public watching through Facebook Live who wishes to comment may do so by email, by telephone, or by using the Zoom Q&amp;A function. The email address again is hha@myhhanj.com. The telephone number is 646-558-8656. Webinar ID 485-881-849. Finally, please be advised that the standard practice of the Executive Director and the members of the Board is to refrain from engaging in a back-and-forth discussion during the public comment portion of authority meetings. However, in light of the ongoing crisis, the Authority realizes that limited exceptions to that practice may be necessary. On behalf of the Authority, I thank you in advance for your patience and understanding. At this time, in order to allow more time for members of the public to submit comment in advance of 7:30, I recommend that the Board consider adopting a resolution to reorder the agenda to allow the Executive Director to present his report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt said resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, then we can move on to the report of the Executive Director and Secretary, including reports on prior unresolved issues and questions for residents raised at the prior meeting.
Thank you, Chairman and the rest of the Board. And let me start out by saying I hope everyone has a fun holiday coming up. I hope your Thanksgiving was as good as mine was. The Resident Services Committee has been very busy this past month working on our our Winter Wonderland event that's coming up on December 20th on Monday evening from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. There's going to be a great holiday event held on the courtyard. So folks, come on along. We've got some great partners, some great people. Commissioner Sightsman, Commissioner Reyes has been working away on it. And I think it's going to be a lot of fun. And I think it's going to show our holiday spirit and can't wait to be there. There's going to be some great music, some goodies. The Police Department are a great partner in it so far. And I don't know if Erica, Barbara, you want to say anything else about it, but it's great.
Oh, just that we're so excited to partner with the Hoboken Police, Hoboken Fire, Hopes, the schools, so many different are coming to support our community. We're also going to be a toy drive. So we look forward to merriment on December 12th from 5:00 to 8:00 in the courtyard.
Yeah, the 20th, and it's going.
Sorry, December 20th from 5:00 to 8:00 in the courtyard. Thank you.
Resident Advisory Board's been heavily involved in the West Side Women Group. So come on, look for flyers and join us. So we are getting back to the business side. We are making significant progress right now in the development of our Hoboken Housing Forward Plan. We are on track to bring it to you, we believe, for the February 2022 meeting. And our planning partners, the Enterprise Partners, and all are playing a role in pulling this thing together. Coming up to the February Board meeting, excuse me, we expect that we're going to be very busy and we expect, I expect that we're going to keep the Board busy during that time. So I would think in January, you're going to see at least one, if not two, maybe special board meetings, maybe a lengthier presentation at the January Board meeting to get everyone up to speed on where we are with our plan. We're having meetings continually and we're kind of polishing things off. And we've got the cost estimators working away, but I really can't emphasize, I can't overemphasize the importance of the next couple of months. We've got the, hopefully, the survey going out very soon. We're hoping to get the survey out, thanks Commissioner Reyes, by the next week. So it's out by the time our Winter Wonderland event comes in. So we've got things going on a lot of fronts and we look forward to polishing off the plan. On December 6th, HUD representatives, along with the Enterprise Partners, met with the Resident Advisory Board for what I think was a really productive meeting with the Rab Board. HUD has been a partner in this from the beginning through Enterprise and through separate meetings with them. I think this was the first time they had direct representation in one of our meetings. And I think you will see them participating in a number of meetings coming up over the next couple of months. We may be having a special board meeting, asking the Board to get together with the HUD representatives just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. I think they're overall real pleased with our progress with the plan. But we need to make sure they're on board, you're on board, we're all communicating. I think the whole community from the residents to the city, to HUD, to our partners are making this happen altogether. So we're really looking forward to the next couple of months. We do expect to have a larger resident meeting coming up in January where we will have HUD present as well as our partners present at a general resident meeting. We haven't finalized the time or place yet, but we will expect to have that certainly before the February Board meeting, where we will have a larger resident meeting as well. So couldn't be more important. I just wanted to take a moment because it's just crucial for those of you commissioners on the call, for those of you staff, for the public that's listening, please tune in. Because we started off with our resident meetings back in the summer, a huge kickoff meeting. And then we've been planning and planning and doing things, doing things. And now we're getting toward the end. So we really are going to want your input as we polish things off and make our final plans. We're excited. Things are really going to start happening fast here. So thanks for that. Any comments by anyone on our basic push on our renovation and redevelopment plan on Hoboken Housing Forward? Look forward to working with you. Enterprise is also holding a staff training for the staff on asset repositioning, renovation, redevelopments in Fifth and Sixth. As you know, Enterprise is contracted by HUD and they are with us, making sure the staff is ready for this transition and making sure we've got all the information that we need. Moving on from that, then, we've got a special project going on with the city. The city has put aside some funds to examine the possibility of having low or no-cost internet Wi-Fi capability at the Hoboken Housing Authority. So we have a team of very capable folks that are getting together to examine the possibility and how we can make this happen at all of our sites, certainly on the main campus, but all of our sites as well. We've got some great people from Stevens that are involved. We've got city representation that are involved. The libraries heavily involved. And if you think about, for example, the campus over at Stevens, they have Wi-Fi for their students. That's automatic. Why can't we have that too? And I think we're on the road to doing that. We're looking at examples, we're looking at the best way to approach it, what we're going to do for long-term maintenance on it, and how we're going to make it happen. But it's just in the formative phases right now, the early stages for information gathering. But we've got the right people in place and we look forward to that project moving forward. We're rebidding the Fox Hill work right now. With the wind at our back, we'll have it to you at the next meeting. The no trespassing signs for the overall Housing Authority sites as well as the Harrison Courtyard are being manufactured right now. A meeting of the Project Rocket was held on November 19th. Security Committee members attended those. Again, we thank the police for pushing that program. I think over the next year, you're really going to see it bear some fruit as we move forward with their community policing. Again, I'd like to thank the police for what they're up to out there. We're seeing more patrols, we're seeing more walkthroughs of our buildings. We're doing constant communication with them and we really appreciate the approach the police is taking right now. The pandemic is still with us, folks. It hasn't gone away. I think we've seen it from the numbers that are coming out from New Jersey and we have felt it here at the Housing Authority, too. We have had a number of staff that over the past 30 days have tested positive. We have followed all CDC recommended routines. We have quarantined a number of staff. So we've had a tough month. We have, you know, when one person in the office tests positive, then the other folks have to quarantine as well. And we've had some struggles with that over the past month. We've redoubled our efforts on safety, on COVID routines. I think, I think we all got a little sloppy there for a month or so. I think nationally, we've seen that and we want to make sure that we're all being really safe and doing everything we can to protect each other with that. So we look forward to better news on that in the future. We do have three administrative positions that are currently open and accepting applications. We have applications in for them. We're going to be starting to interview probably the week after next. The Maintenance Director position, we've had a very robust response to our advertisement this time. So we're looking forward to doing those interviews. We do have a qualified purchasing agent position being advertised right now. This was a position that was approved by the Board a couple of years ago and we've held off just to keep our budget in line. But we think it's time with the impending changes in our plan that we've got this quality QPA firm here to assist Emil and to make sure our purchasing as we go into renovation rehabilitation is good and we have the bandwidth. A third position, by the way, this position was heavily recommended by the Enterprise Partners as well. It's going to give us some real more purchasing and easier purchasing power out there. The third position is an executive assistant, a public relations person. This is for communication purposes, particularly as we go into our new renovation rehabilitation over the next couple of years as we're putting our plan into effect. Enterprise, we agree, and I think a couple of you on this Board have also agreed that we need to hone up on our public relations, getting our message out, making sure that we're communicating the best we can, not certainly with our residents, but also with the rest of the Hoboken community. It's going to be crucial that people know what we're doing, that we're getting our message out, that people understand what we're doing, people understand our transparency. So this would be in a position that would help us with our website, would help us with responses to questions, make sure we're on track and letting everyone know what we're up to here at the Housing Authority. So if you know anyone for those positions, please have them come in. Housing for Hoboken did not meet this month. However, it is time to put out applications once more and accept applications for the positions that are community positions on that board. You know, as you remember, we have two members of the community that are trustees on that five-member board. And we will be putting out a notice very shortly that we'll be accepting applications for the next two-year term for those board members, for those trustee members. And everyone will have to put in application, whether you're a sitting trustee or not, have to reapply for those positions. And we would expect that with the next maybe 30 to 60 days, that we'll be able to come back to you as a board with a recommendation for trustee members for Housing for Hoboken. Vacancy issues, management has been working really hard. And I think possibly you see my vacancy report and possibly let Frank say a thing or two about it. We did have 14 new lease-ups in addition to nine transfers over the last month, which is more than we've had in quite a long time. We've had to revise our goal of 95% occupancy by December 31st, back a little bit to January 31st. We think we're going to be able to meet that within that 30 days. However, what surprised us, I think, the most was that we had 20 folks that didn't want to move in for one reason or another. After they applied, they were approved, their numbers picked high, and they came and we spent the week, two weeks getting them in, doing their paperwork, getting everything ready, and then eventually they said, "No, thanks." So then we were at square one again, going on to the next person on the list and bringing them in. So we really didn't expect that. So we'd have had those other 20 leased up, but we had to start with square one. But I think our projections are solid on that. I do like the new report that's in your packet that Frank has developed. And Frank, you want to add anything to that on the vacancy report?
Sure. Yeah, what I really like about what I see out there is that we have a very clear path of where we're going and much more predictable. Though, as you mentioned, the thing that did catch me by surprise being that it's a very, it's a fresh waiting list, is people showed up and then they, and I know that some of it has to do with some of the things that have happened at Harrison Gardens over the summer. But you know, what people don't realize is that as bad as the things that did happen, a lot of good has also come out of that. I think the community has rallied around it and even this event that's coming is a great way to kind of cap the direction that it's really going in. So there's still plenty of people on the list. We are going to get them. That was Fox Hills, obviously, on its stand on its own. People go to Fox Hill for the most part. They take it. In the senior buildings, the struggles continue to be the studios. And that's kind of the same thing that the redevelopment plan, that's part of the reason why in the design, they're looking to make do with those because it's hard. It's hard and people come in and, you know, they see the studio, they don't want to be in a studio, even though they apply for a studio, which is unfortunate. And that is, that is one of the struggles. But the reality is that the apartments are looking good. We know where we're going and we have a solid plan to move forward with it.
And Frank, I like your new report. And I think as we build on that over the month, the commissioners, take a moment when you get a chance to take a look at the new report. That's a forecasting tool for us. I think it's going to be much clearer from month to month on where we are and what we're up to.
And so if you would like to, I don't know if you want to do it now, but so if you have it in front of you, commissioners, the vacant is the normal information we have. Working is the apartments in which we currently have either a contractor or local 55 working in. The ready apartments, those are the ones that now have been assigned. If you see the assigned column, it's a little bit larger because some of those working apartments are close. Like some of them could be at 80%, 70%. We're still continuing to wait on some cabinets and things like that in general, but that's getting a little bit better. The 42 project, it turned out to be a much longer project than expected. That's also coming to a close soon and that's what brings us into that January timeframe. So I like where we are now. The only surprise was the refusals. That was, I didn't see that one coming in. Now I've kind of added that in into the forecast a little bit here.
Thank you, Frank. We continue to work on our software system. We're up and running in most every phase. We've still got a few kinks to work out, which is natural with the new software system. But we're real pleased with what we're seeing. And special capital projects that are going on right now, our New Jersey HMFA funding, the last of it. To remember, we managed to capture some extra money at the end of the contract. We're having a pre-job meeting to be held on Friday. That money is going to exterior repairs at Andrew Jackson Gardens and for a kind of uplift renovation of the heating plant over at Adams Gardens. So we're really excited about that, that project, particularly the heating part. Unfortunately, it wasn't in time for this heating season. Will be completed in the spring. There's long lead times on the boiler equipment. But we're excited to be moving forward with that. It was kind of found money for us. The seven emergency generator project is still in design. Our compactor project only has one compactor left. I believe that we started with seven, so one product, one compactor left out of that. And the facade project at Monroe is still undergoing permitting and actually, again, materials. They're having some time to find and get delivered the matching brick that's going to be going on the building. So they're all set, but they're just waiting for the final permitting and materials. Management's been focused on filling vacancies, as you just heard, and our software transition. We still have five tenant-based vouchers that folks are out there looking for a place to move into. Our maintenance report, the staff continues the work on passing our next REAC inspection. And of course, we've been very busy on maintenance with the cold weather coming. Our boiler crew has been busy and I think really rising to the challenge every year. As we start back up, there's some hitches in the get-along, but every year now, it's getting much, much better. Our systems are working much better. Maintenance is prepared for snow, our salt's in, our machinery's in working order. If you remember, you did approve a few months ago a new like Kubota-type machine for us. We are still waiting upon delivery for that machine. We're hoping for it to come in any day. Then we sure hope it gets here before the snow, they're racing. And of course, our continued battle with emergency and preventative repairs. We've had some interior wall leaks at some of our buildings where our supply lines are coming open with pinhole leaks that we've had to deal with over the past month. So the overall redevelopment renovation project couldn't come fast enough, in my opinion. The 2020 audit is in process. And before I turn it over to Daniel to talk about some of the many holiday events that are coming up over the next month, I have to say that I may miss a few. I'll be out on a medical, starting next week, having my knee replaced. I would expect that for about a week that I'll be pretty much out of it. And then I would expect that the next week, which is the week before Christmas, I expect that I'll be back in the loop virtually on Zooms, on phone, checking in with everyone. But I would expect that after next Tuesday, which is my surgery date, that there'll be a five or six-day period there where you won't hear much from me. During that period, Emil will be in charge here of operations. So if anything comes up, feel free to reach out to Emil. I know you're in good hands with Emil and the rest of my team. I know they'll do a good job in meeting your needs as I'm going through the short recovery. It shouldn't take too long. And with that, I'll hand it over to Daniel to talk a little bit about Resident Services.
Thank you, Mr. Reco. I'm going to be very brief because we do have a presenter that has been working with the Housing Authority for some time. And I want to give him an opportunity to quickly summarize some of the work that in partnership we have been doing at Christopher Columbus. The Director, I just wanted to highlight three large events that are coming up in the next couple of weeks, actually, next week or so. We have Brian Stack, his annual toy giveaway, December 19th, from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And that's going to be at the Harrison Gardens Courtyard. So we're really excited for Senator Stack to continually support our communities. Then we have our large holiday celebration event on December 20th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, also at the courtyard. And then also, I received also information from Hopes about an additional event, December 21st, at the Rue Building from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So it's going to be an exciting time for all of our families and our community to come together in the spirit of the season. Before handing it over to Pastor Matt, whom I've been working with, him and his staff and the residents of Christopher Columbus, I just have a quick note and some gratitude and appreciation to the following folks. Hopefully, I won't miss anyone. And if I do, please excuse me, it's just a lot of partners and friends of the Hoboken Housing Authority that throughout the year help us put these activities, programs, and bring resources to our community to support our families. So I will start very briefly. We have Hoboken Grace, thank you so much, Hoboken Food Pantry, Heidi, Lauren, Sasha at the Hoboken Public Library, they're phenomenal. Thank you so much for supporting our community, WellCare, Kearney Bank. We also have our Councilman Phil Cohen, Ruben Ramos Jr. and Senior continually support our community, especially the residents of 221 Jackson Street. Thank you so much, Council Assemblywoman Chaparo. We also have Commissioner Impastato, who has assisted us and donated to our residents as well. So really, thank you so much. Gary Greenberg from the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you, Gary, for letting us or lending us your building to host our past planning meetings. So thank you so much. Emily and Tiffany, thank you so much for your continued support. The Resident Advisory Board, phenomenal group. They're engaged, they're committed, and they work very hard. Thank you, Mr. Joe McDonald. He is phenomenal. Sandra, thank you, thank you so much for your amazing work. I also have true mentors, community lifestyles, amazing, true society. And now, we got contacted by the Hoboken Running Club, who also wants to donate toys to our families. Hoboken Police Department, there are so many. Sorry if I missed anyone. Thank you so much. I would like to now have Pastor Matt say a few words, summary of programming and services that he had brought over to Christopher Columbus. And also, Uh, Christopher Columbus and also uh, his goodbyes because he's no longer going to be with us, so sorry to see you go, Matt.
Sure, Matt, we're going to miss you.
I appreciate that, Mark, I really do, um, yeah, I did, I did receive a. A job offer to serve at a church in Michigan, so call me back home, back out west, as uh, you people fly out, fly over country, so.
Where are you going to be in Michigan?
Midland.
Midland.
Yeah. So, uh, yes, just uh, just a summary of what we've done, um, here. Uh, at the Christopher Columbus Gardens, uh, Danny originally invited me in two thousand seventeen, I believe it was. To adopt more or less the property and provide programming for the residents. And that that's ended up what we did, um, we, before we had started services in what we had been using as the bowtie cinema. Uh, we were doing monthly programs and that was uh, our strategy. Um, barring a few months in twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-one. Um, we had done something every single month on a regular rhythm. And it's it's been really cool to see the growth and the development of the programming at CCG. The number of residents who are wildly supportive. Um, and thus the appreciation, uh, what has been done for them and with them. Um, over the summer times, we would do monthly uh, neighborhood cookouts, so we'd have burgers and hot dogs and just. Very fun music and conversation. Um, in the, in the fall, we would transition to something a bit more thematic, so um, twenty nineteen, we did. Um, e- every year, we've actually done a uh, eat, drink and be scary Halloween party costume contest. Uh, games, uh, all themed, oh, in outdoor trick-or-treating and it was just, it's just been, that was one of the highest attended event. Now it's always really well-loved by the residents and by the community, people really love that one. And uh, and then in November and in in December, we would do a Thanksgiving and Christmas-themed uh, neighborhood dinner. And in the colder months, when we could meet in indoors, we would do that. Um, doing a kind of a community potluck style thing, a lot of the residents would bring down food, we'd have plenty of food to go around, very similar to what would happen at two twenty-one Jackson. Um, a lot of the inspiration from the what we did on the indoor side of things came from that meal. Um, and this was really cool and at this juncture, I I anticipated. Um, since the summertime that I I was looking for a new appointment and um, wanting to go. And basically is enable the residents and uh, community members to continue these programs, so we have formed a CCG action team. And preferably, uh, Lord willing, they will continue to do. All those things that we have been so hard at work doing, I think they're passionate, they're excited, they are. They want to serve their neighbors and it's just really cool to see, so I'm I'm thankful for the opportunity, it's one of the highlight of my industries. And I am just appreciative of everything that CCG is and everything the Hoboken Housing Authority is, so thank you, Danny, for your partnership and just. Uh, o- oftentimes giving me, is enabling me to be able to do this and inviting me to take part in serving the residents of the Housing Authority, it's been great.
Thank you, Matt, you've been phenomenal, when I first came in to the Housing Authority with, you know, with meetings that we had with the director with uh. For the residents at Christopher Columbus, one of the things that they called for was we need activities, we need programming. And at that time, I was looking for a partner, thank God, uh, you just happened to appear. Uh, like an angel from Michigan and we were able to put together. Many activities and programs, I mean, I'm really thankful with the monthly barbecues over the summer and then the Halloween events, the the holiday events as well. And also you supported us with back-to-school supplies for our families there, so. The family is engaged, is committed and and I think what you planted in that community will continue. Of course, with, you know, support also from our resident council president, Mr. Davis up there. And also the residents are are very committed to continuing the program, so you you pretty much, um. You know, started that flame and and we'll we'll definitely continue, we won't let it die, so thank you so much for your amazing work. And uh, and and thank you for sharing your love and compassion and energy with the residents of Christopher Columbus and the Housing Authority.
Thanks very much, Danny, it's been an honor.
Thank you, Director.
Anything we.
Thank you.
And if I, if I could just, if I could just chime in, uh, Matt, Pastor Matt. Um, if I can for a second, if you're still there.
Yeah.
Um, I've gotten to know you a little bit over the last uh, couple of years. And I I I personally want to thank you for everything you've done for our residents. Um, you know, it takes a, it takes a lot, a lot of patience to, a lot of steadfast operations and. You you've done tremendous things and it's it's really sad to see you go, you've been a leader in the community. And you're you're just a, you're you're a good person, man, and um, wish you nothing but the best.
I appreciate your kind words, man, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and that officially concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and again, uh, you know, I want to echo what uh, Commissioner Impastado said. So thank you very much for your service to our community. Um, let's move on to. Reports of committees, do we have any reports of committees relevant to this meeting? Okay, let's move on to unfinished business, is there any unfinished business from last meeting? Alright, so resolution, or no, before we do the resolution. Public comment period.
Yes, we have Adrian Rawlings, Angel, allow Adrian Rawlings, please.
Oh, wait, I lost her. Hello.
Hello. Floor is yours, Ms. Rawlings.
I, I'm asked in email. Uh, and I haven't received a uh, proper response. Uh, regarding family self-sufficiency program, we used to have one. Uh, and.
Sorry, this is the court.
It was.
Sorry, this is, hello?
Hold on.
Can you hear me?
I know, my connection sucks, I know.
Court reporter.
I'm fine.
If she could just talk a little. I I I missed a lot of what she said.
Took it down so she could do something.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rawlings, it's just your connection is just a little bit bad.
Alright, I've asked for a proper response regarding family sufficiency. Well, I have no other way to get in contact with you guys besides email. Nobody wants to answer the email, so I have to talk at the meeting. I can't use my phone, my daughter has it. Unless you want to buy a new laptop. This is all I've got. Family self-sufficiency program. According to Ms. Seitzman. They've been working on it for two years. We had one. As of twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. It disappeared. You hired Mr. Perez. That's when you just started to get work on. I've already sent the email, nobody's responded to that last comment. I'd like a response to that. Also, the residents that were. Noted in last month's meeting. Ms. Rojas, so four hundred Marshall Drive. Uh, Sandra Kelly for nineteen Marshall Drive. I've sent you the issues, nobody's done squat. My sister still is waiting for a new stove. Check the emails, they're there. The costs are there. And then maintenance is still doing a very bad job of cleaning. They need to step up their game. Or I'm going to start doing it for fifty, fifty dollars an hour. Touched to the Housing Authority. That's all.
Alright, thank you. Do we have anybody else for public portion?
No one else, Chair. And there are no emails.
And nothing in the uh, Q and A either, just to make clear, correct?
Correct.
Great.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero one, a resolution to approve the minutes for the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Monthly board meeting, I'll make a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, do we have any question or comment on the minutes? If we get a vote, please, Director.
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? That's a hand up from Mr. Louis. Uh, Dee Mello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
Alright, uh, resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero two, a resolution to approve the minutes of the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one monthly board meeting. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? If we get a vote, please, Director.
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? Got his hand up?
Yes.
Dee Mello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
Alright, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero three, a resolution authorizing the payment of the monthly list of bills. For the Hoboken Housing Authority, I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Alright, any comments or questions regarding the monthly list of bills? If I could have a vote, please, second, Director.
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? Hand up, signifying aye. Uh, Dee Mello?
Uh, yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Abstain.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
Alright, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero four, a resolution to increase the amount of the contract for roof replacement. At Harrison Gardens, I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
The roofs were done on Harrison Gardens.
Yeah, Emma, you want to address is kind of a final cleanup on the contract. Um, you know, the contract gets done and then the 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 final costs come in and all of that and the architect signs off and. Everything kind of true, it takes a couple of months to get everything in, so um, Emma, anything else on that you'd like to mention?
Yeah, the the roofs have been done for a number of months, they were just submitting the closeout documents, the contractor got tied up with a, with a, yes, that's. Um, with another con- uh, contract and as such, he didn't submit it that timely, but. It it did address the repointing work that was needed, uh, there were four additional exhaust fans needed, there was. And then there were some material cost increases that, um, based on the timing of it, the architect had reviewed and said. This is reasonable and we should address it and move forward with this change order to close out this contract.
Beautiful assistance you've got there, Mr. Emma.
Alright, any other questions? If we get a vote, please.
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? Thumbs up for Mr. Louis, Dee Mello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero five, a resolution to reject all bids for electrical services, I will make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Get of the vote, please.
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? Uh, thumbs up for Mr. Louis.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero six, a resolution to award a contract for general engineering services, I will make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any questions or comments? Get a vote, please.
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? Uh, thumbs up for Mr. Louis, Dee Mello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero seven, a resolution to award a contract for fee accounting services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And I'll I'll second it. Um, have any question or comment?
Ready for a vote, Chairman?
Yes.
Anne Impastado?
Yeah.
Hey, Louis? Thumbs up for Mr. Louis, Dee Mello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
And resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve point zero eight, a resolution to award a contract for risk management services, I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any questions or comments? If you get of the vote, please.
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? Thumbs up for Mr. Louis, Dee Mello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
Alright, is there any new business? I believe we have a um, resolution to go into closed session, counselor?
Uh, yes, and I believe that is in your packet, um, I don't need to necessarily read it into. Um, the record unless you would like me to, it's to discuss matters of personnel, Mr. Chair. And uh, I believe there is the possibility that action would be taken, um, when we come back out into open session.
Okay. Um, alright, that's, I'll make the motion to go into closed session, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, clear vote, please, Director?
Anne Impastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis? Thumbs up for Mr. Louis, Dee Mello?
Yes.
B Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Aye.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
And uh, Mr. Chair, we may want to discuss whether uh, we should give a uh, time. At which we uh, expect to come back out into open session, that way the public can rejoin us.
I don't, I don't think it'll take more than fifteen minutes myself, but uh.
It's up to you what time you want to give it, we just uh, should advise the members of the public in case they would like to rejoin us.
That works, fifteen?
Let's, let's go with fifteen minutes then.
Okay, so that would be five minutes after eight.
Well, according to my watch, but that's okay, I can go five.
And during, during the period when we are in closed session, we have to make sure that. The uh, Zoom attendees are carefully reviewed. To only have the people who are appropriate to have on the call, which would be the members of the board, council, court reporter. And any other people that are advised to be on and that would include the executive director.
Yes, agreed, okay, if we could please remove everybody not on that list that was just given so eloquently by legal counsel.
Very good, and Angel, Angel will be doing that now, and Angel, can you hear me just fine?
Yes, sir, I'm closing the lights, dreaming, and I'm switching you to be a host.
Thank you for that, Angel, and I and I think we may want. Thank you for that, Angel, and I and I think we may want you to at least uh. Check back in so we could resume the live stream, which is a little different than we thought. Um, so, um, um, Angel, I might just be able to text you. Um, when it's time to resume the live stream.
Um, if I make you the host, um, I remove myself, I probably won't be able to come back.
I know. Well, then you just, you just stay the host for now. And uh, in that case, and just to remove everyone except the commissioners and Miss Teresa. And you stay on with us then.
And and us as well, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Me and Harold, who's uh the four thousand one.
Harold, the two oh one, and and Matt Fitzpatrick.
Do you want to stop the recording on this too?